Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Radnor Township School District School Board. It is Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, and we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. The second item on the agenda is the report on executive sessions. We're actually going to do that after this meeting. So the next item is the report from student representatives. Welcome, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you all, too. So, good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see you all back again, and I hope you all had a great and fantastic holiday break. So since there was no meeting in December, I want to quickly acknowledge that that month was full of full festive energy, including mounting victories in the RHS sports world and our college career and trades fair. But for the sake of time, let's focus on the exciting news that January brought us. To kick off the year, RHS celebrated the retirement of Trevor James, an RHS custodian who dedicated decades of service to our school. His contributions to our community have been immeasurable, and we wish him the very best in this new chapter of his new life. On a more festive note, our annual Winter Fest was the highlight of the month, offering prospective eighth graders a glimpse into the myriad of activities and classes that RHS has to offer. The energy and enthusiasm on display were a testament to the vibrant school community that we have. Switching gears to extracurriculars, our high Q team dominated their home meet, showcasing their intellect, teamwork, and of course, the famous Radnor spirit as students cheered them on. Meanwhile, the Black Student Union hosted its annual talent show, featuring an unforgettable evening of beautiful singing, powerful acting, and even incredible music performances that celebrated the creativity within our school. The RHS Band and Color Guard hosted their annual night, a night full of laughter, dancing, and celebration. On the sports side of things, the wrestling team hosted their Cure SMA match in honor of Peter Henkel, demonstrating the power of sports to unite us for a greater cause than ourselves. Our cheerleaders shined at the Central League Championships in Haverford, proving their energy and skill are truly second to none. Additionally, several teams, including swimming and basketball, but more, celebrated their senior night this month. These bittersweet events honored the hard work and dedication of our senior athletes while reminding us of the incredible legacies they leave behind. Now, as we all know, January is synonymous with midterms. At RHS, exams began last Friday, starting with English and math, and officially wrapped up today, ending with social studies and makeups. This marked countless hours of preparation from both students and teachers. It was a challenging way to start the new year, so I want to take a moment to commend every single one of us for their hard work during this time. I'd also like to highlight an exciting new initiative. RHS introduced Wellness Wednesday, offering yoga and relaxation opportunities during the luncheon period. Now, this program was a very refreshing way for both students and staff to recharge and focus on their mental health before the midterm mania set in. It's a great example of how our school prioritizes our well-being alongside with the academic excellence. So that's it for me, but as we look ahead, I'm confident that this new year 2025 will bring more growth, achievements, and moments that will make all of us proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is the report from our superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to see everyone. It's nice to have so many of our students here. I'm going to keep my report very quick because I don't want to, I think George Washington is waiting to perform, so. It's great to have them here with us tonight, and parents, welcome. It's good to have you here as well. Just a couple of highlights for the board and the community. We had our Martin Luther King Day of Service. I want to thank all of the PTOs at all of our buildings for coming together to organize such a wonderful program for our whole community and students to be involved. We did have to move it because of the weather, but it was successful again, even with the move to this past Saturday. I want to make sure the board is aware that Mrs. Jenny La Sage, our Director of Student Services at Special Education, tonight on our agenda is her retirement. We have her, though, until, I believe, the summer. It's going to be somewhere in that June, July, August where her retirement will commence. So we still have plenty of time to honor Jenny and thank Mrs. La Sage for all her hard work and dedication. One of the things that I have always admired about Mrs. La Sage is how she always puts the needs of our students first and fights so hard for our students. So while we're happy for her to be announcing retirement, we are sad to see her go, and we will be posting that position moving forward. And then I wanted to just share with our community that we have a speaker, Dr. Devor Heitner, will be joining us on Thursday, January 30th, helping kids grow up in their digital world. It's something that we have been talking about often for many years, but especially, I think, since COVID, about, you know, screen time and what is that right balance? We're discussing with our teachers and how do we do technology in a grade and age-appropriate way? When we came out of COVID, we had devices for all of our students, and then we quickly realized that we didn't need our kindergarten to second graders to have those devices at home, and then we realized maybe the third graders don't need to have those devices going home, and even talk about the fourth and fifth graders. We want to make sure as a school, we're creating the right balance and making sure that as we move forward, you know, this is something that, you know, many educators are reading the book, Anxious Generation. That is a book the school board, I know, has been reading, and we've been discussing what's the right balance when we look at this technology. I have had, I have made a few jokes that that book, Anxious Generation, is making all of us parents very anxious with when do we buy cell phones, what is that appropriate time? So without having, I want to thank our technology department for everything they've done to take the lead in bringing in this presentation. It is open to our entire community, and then we have some other opportunities as well where she's going to work with our students, so we're excited for this event. And then just for the school board and community, some upcoming events for January. Again, there are always a lot of activities and things happening around the district. And I believe that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. And next up on the agenda, we have a recognition. I know that the group that we have here to recognize actually wants, has a performance for us. Were they going to do that first? Do the recognition first? Okay. I just wanted to make sure we got it in the right order. So Dr. Babson is going to help us by reading out the names of the students. If you would, as he reads your name, you guys would come up and just stand along the semicircle, make space for everybody, so all your parents and other family members who are here can celebrate you with us.
So before you perform, we want to present you with a certificate, and then we'll have an opportunity after that.
Okay. Evening, everyone. So right now, what we're going to do is we're, I'm going to read a little bit about Mr. Serpico's class, and then I'm going to invite all the students to come up, and then we'll have a round of applause, and then they will do their performance, okay? So this is a congratulations for Mr. Serpico, Todd Serpico's. Where's Mr. Serpico? There you are. So Mr. Serpico taught my son Grant at RES, and congratulations to you and the kids here. So Mr. Serpico's fifth-grade class earned second place in the annual Rendell Center Civics Education Citizenship Challenge on January 8th at Philadelphia's National Constitution Center. The center posed the annual citizenship challenge question to fourth and fifth-grade students throughout the greater Philadelphia region in October of last year, asking, should the Constitution be amended to eliminate the Electoral College system for selecting the president and replace it with the national popular vote? After receiving hundreds of essays, the Rendell Center selected Radnor Elementary's Cassidy Danhauser and classmate Molly Graverson's essays as finalists for the contest. Cassidy and Molly organized their classmates in Mr. Serpico's Team 19 to create an original, once-in-a-lifetime performance to bring their essay to life. This one-of-a-kind performance included an original song, original student-plan choreography, student-made props, costumes, and an original skit. Each classmate, all 23 students, had multiple roles and responsibilities, including writing, researching, planning, creating, drawing, thinking, dancing, and doing. This live performance was completely planned by all of Cassidy and Molly's Team 19 classmates, a true team effort. So now I'm going to call out the name of each student, and what I'd like you to do when you come up, come up here and stand here. We'll have a nice line here, and then when I'm done bringing everyone up, then we'll have a nice round of applause, okay? So first, I'd like to invite Annabelle Berry. Annabelle? Andrew Boswell? Okay? Christopher Brown? Jack Cunningham? Cassidy Danhauser? Okay? Jacob Davidsey? Nolan Forster? Okay? Molly Graverson? Adelaide Hoffman? Emery Kane? Rosalie Kerr? Leah King? Emma Luce? Delia Magdaleno? Anushka Malor? Reeve Nissenbaum? Cassandra Payne? Harrison Perkins? Trevor Quinn? Martin Stam? Haley Swisher? Tang Tang? Lucas Truluski? Okay, that's everyone. So special thanks to the following members of Mr. and Mrs. Willian's class for their help with the project. Maria Teresa Galino? Hannah Lee? Milo Lim? Bryn Scheflin? So the superintendent, here, I'm going to get out of the way. So the superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community, congratulates these students, their parents, and teacher on their outstanding accomplishments.
Did you want to do the certificates right now?
Let's not hand them out while they're trying to do their performance.
Are you going to do their performance? We'll do it after. So I want to ask board members to come sit in the audience, then.
We found a piece of America.
Why don't you guys go line up over there and get ready to practice? Yep. Line up over there in the order that we practice, and we'll walk in. There you go, guys. Line up here, and we're going to walk over there and perform there. The last three times I saw Dr. Bachelor, I was breaking a good citizenship rule. I don't know if you remember that. I was standing on a ladder singing one time. The next time, I was reprimanding children for wearing the blackout glasses during the eclipse and not listening. We were going to miss it. And then last time was the holiday sing, and I was running through the hallway. I had to call a parent back, so hopefully I'm on my best behavior. Mr. Babson covered almost everything I was going to say, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Go ahead up here. Keep going. Yep, keep going. Right about there. Did someone want to hold this piece? We had seven students absent on Monday, so we're missing quite a few, but we're going to do the best we can with the team that we've got. Thank you. If anybody wants this one, thanks.
You may recognize this song. And perhaps.
We know. That's what makes America so nice.
Whenever I see some states with less electors than I, and let's face it, some states are less elected than I. Our smaller states tend to feel unheard, and when America needs all its voters, electors aren't just our voters. Congress knows exactly what we need. And even in this race, though it's the toughest case US has yet to face, don't worry, we're determined to succeed. Follow our lead, and yes, indeed, votes can be popular. Voters gotta be popular. Teaching the proper polls, no excuse to poll, rally our Senate and House, we'll show where how much we care, get our fifteen votes to share. Every vote that really counts to make the press popular. We'll make the press popular. Let's inspire the highest courts, it's America's last resort, and then the law we got to grow. So let's start, because we've got to change, we know. Fathers don't be offended by self-analysis, think it's just America's new paralysis. But I would choose them to become mobilizers, there's nothing wiser, not when it comes to voting to press popular. I know the press is popular, and with the assistance from Congress, the factions can breathe instead of what the wrong words now are. There's nothing that can stop you from becoming popular. La, 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 la. We're gonna make the press popular. When I see depressing states with uninspired voters, I remind them of our own founders, new to crow, even celebrated heads of state or especially great communicators. Sure, they have brains or knowledge, don't make us laugh. They weren't popular, please. It's all about popular. It's not about saying subdues until we become a glue, so it's very shrewd to be, very, very popular, like me.
By America, look at you. You're beautiful.
It's time, you know.
You're ready.
And of some protest, their disinterest, we know eventually. We're gonna make a change, introduce popularity. Ah! La, 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 la. Press will be popular, the press by popular vote to victory.
Just say one or two things at the end. A big thank you to our building principal, Dr. Young, assistant, Mr. Schmirecki, Beth Speckler, Dr. Kearney, Susan McCaffrey, Anne von Hurstenberg, Katie Sullivan, our school nurse, Delana Pearson, Virginia from Transportation Department, Evan Costa, Danielle De Horatius, Heather Graverson, all the administrators and leaders inside our building. They've been extremely supportive of the grant process and the RESPTO, from everything, from practicing, rehearsing, down to logistics on the day of that we needed to make this happen. It was a huge team effort and a win for the whole Radnor classes, really coached these kids as well on how to answer the questions, and I thought that was a really nice touch to get everyone involved. So definitely really proud of these kids. We had a long meeting a week before the performance. We talked about a quote, "The reward for doing your best is not what you get by doing it, but what you become by doing it." So I love this Team 19. I'm proud of all of them, the extra Willians kids that joined us. Thank you, school board, for giving them a moment, this moment to shine. And let's not forget that all this is about is knowing our rights as citizens, as Americans, and becoming positive citizens in our community, appreciating democracy, and being aware of what our rights are. Thank you so much for this moment of recognition. Great job. There was a small acrobatic performance that we cut out, so we did that on an injury. Great job, kids. Thank you.
That was really wonderfully creative. I think, are you going to take a picture of them out in the lobby? You have pictures set up to take out in the lobby. You're more than welcome to stay, but we also understand if you have other things you want to do this evening. Thank you again so much for bringing the show on the road, so we could appreciate it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is recognition of the service of the RTSD Board of School Directors in honor of School Director Recognition Month. I always ask not to have to read this.
I was just going to say, and I would like to jump in, if that's all right?
Please.
And I want to thank the board for allowing me to put this on the agenda tonight. January is School Director Recognition Month in Pennsylvania, time to recognize the valuable contributions of our school directors who ensure decisions about our schools are made as close as possible to the needs of our community and our children. These individuals serve as volunteers without pay, something I think many people don't realize. We thank our current school directors for their achievements and dedicated service. In alphabetical order, Andrew Babson, Liz Duffy, Sarah Dunn, Claire Gerton, Janie Lau, Lon Rosenbloom, Lydia Solomon, Susan Stern, and DJ Thornton. Public education is the only unit of local government spelled out of the Pennsylvania Constitution which empowers school directors to set policy within the framework of the statutes enacted by the General Assembly. Our school directors clearly demonstrate a desire to serve our community in this unique public service role. Through their dedication to service and local public education, school directors demonstrate a unique commitment to the community's future, our children. The following resolution was adopted on July 18th, 1985, and affirmed on November 10th, 2012, by the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Whereas the role of locally-elected school officials has served the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and local communities and mean the needs of public education since the passage of the Free School Act in 1834, and whereas these local school boards have discharged their responsibilities to public education in a manner which has placed public education in the forefront of our educational systems, and whereas locally-elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment, and whereas the contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from the workings of our public school system. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association hereby proclaims the month of January as School Director Recognition Month in this Commonwealth, and further resolve that this proclamation be communicated to all school districts, school officials, and local communities in a planned program which brings visibility and awareness of the role of locally-elected school officials to the citizenry of this Commonwealth. I just would like to say, from the administrative team, from the staff, from our community, we thank you for all of your dedication and service to the Radnor community and to our students. It is a volunteer position where you do spend a lot of time, and you all, as a group, are always so focused on our students and the overall well-being of this community. So thank you. Thank you for your service. On behalf of everyone, you have a little gift from the admin team. I also want to just acknowledge, also, the Pennsylvania Schools Board Association acknowledges an honor roll for your years of service. So we also have tonight, the governing board of the Pennsylvania School Board Association proudly presents a certificate of appreciation to Liz Duffy for five years of service to school board. So Liz, congratulations. And then the Pennsylvania School Board also has, as part of their honor roll, a certificate of appreciation to Lydia Solomon for 15 years of service. I would continue to go on about our board, but somebody will start to kick me soon, so that, I will conclude my remarks.
Lucky for you, my legs are short. Is this where you're going to embarrass us with a video?
Well, I, yes. Then, one last piece. We wanted to take a moment to recognize all of you, but to focus on all of you. So Mrs. Brennan, our communications department, has prepared a video.
I shouldn't have that. Okay. So we invited, am I on? Yes. We invited students around the district to post some questions to our school board, just to find out a little bit more about how they feel about being on the school board, as well as a little bit more about themselves personally, and this is what we came up with. Enjoy.
What do you think is the most important quality for a school board member to have?
That's a really good question. I think there's a lot of qualities. I think you've got to be caring, you've got to be smart, you've got to have pride in your community.
That's easy, just be a really good listener.
It's really important to pause, listen, reflect.
The people who are most successful or make the most contribution are people who are just really passionate about education.
The most important, to me, as a school board member, is empathy.
To be a good school board member, you have to be like a good student.
You have to be inquisitive. You have to question the answers people give you. You have to ask questions that aren't on the page of what's being answered.
What's one achievement of the school board you're most proud of?
Anything that we've done ongoing with curriculum, and especially with MTSS, to me, is the most significant. What we've been able to do with MTSS is address all learners' needs, and that touches upon almost every other thing that we do.
I'm so proud that we implemented full-day kindergarten when we did, long before other districts did, and I just think it's been a huge advantage to our whole community.
The most visible thing right now is the addition we did at the high school.
Accessibility was a huge problem, and I'm really proud of the fact that a lot more people who might have been nervous to come to our events can come and celebrate with their families.
I feel that our Early Learning Academy really levels the playing field here in Radnor, where we have families who are able to give their children tremendous opportunities from the very earliest days of their preschool time. That's, that one brought tears to my eyes.
Did you ever have a favorite teacher growing up?
And who were they and why?
So my favorite teacher was my English as a Second Language teacher in my regular class when I was still trying to learn English. It was really hard for me to follow along, and the other kids would laugh at me or snicker when I didn't know how to say something. My ESL teacher was just the warmest, most incredible, most supportive teacher I've ever had.
The ones that stand out are the ones that knew, even though school was not always so easy for me, but that knew that I had something to offer.
And it was my chemistry teacher. He was just really funny and really smart.
I love Ms. Kirk Albert. She had a rule in her class that you couldn't say "yeah, but." So you could tell someone how you felt, and they had to listen, but they couldn't say "yeah, but." You'd be surprised how hard it is not to say "yeah, but" when someone's telling you something.
It was Sister Rosemary, and she was my math teacher, and I loved her because she was, she was smart.
was, she was smart, she was spunky, she was loud, and she was just so sharp and creative, and she made every day fun.
Did you ever get in trouble when you were in school?
If you did, what did you do?
I'm sure you never get in trouble at school. Actually, I have to say, I was a pretty good kid all through school.
Well, I was pretty much a rule follower. Made no surprise.
I'm sure I made a few mistakes along the way.
No.
All the time.
I got thrown out of the library for being too chatty.
I did get in trouble in school. The first time I remember getting in trouble in school, I was in kindergarten. I was in Mrs. Stephanopoulos's class.
Oh, yeah. Well, in fourth grade, I... Then in ninth grade, that's probably not a story I want to share. But my senior year, I was misbehaving, and I...
Do you have a favorite memory from lunch?
Or maybe recess?
Oh, my favorite recess memory was one in which I got in trouble. I was playing on the playground in third grade, and the little girl that I was playing with, she went down the slide, and she kind of fell off the side and broke her arm. And I said to her, "You're gonna be okay," but she wasn't.
This is actually kind of bad, but my middle school went through this period where we would have food fights in the cafeteria every single day, and it got so bad that they made us all move outdoors and eat our lunch outdoors. But then we would still have these food fights in the courtyard.
It was a thing where at recess, you would run around and rip the Levi's tag off of the pants pocket, the back of the pants pocket, of somebody if you liked them. This was a whole thing.
Absolutely. I remember at recess, we had a big floor hockey tournament, and we won the championship. So that was one of my most exciting memories from recess.
In elementary school, I loved to play dodgeball. That was my favorite.
What was your favorite subject in school when you were my age, and why?
Oh, that's easy. Psychology. I took psychology in 10th grade, and I became a psychology major, and I love it. Psychology's part of it, which you do almost no matter what line of work. So psychology is where it's at for me.
Latin was my favorite subject. I actually became a classics major in college, and being needed by Virgil, and it was just life-changing. Sounds a little too much, but close to it.
Absolutely. History. To this day, it still is. Law school, one of my favorite classes was tax law, and not because tax law was particularly engaging, but because the professor was so interesting.
I loved science. I loved history. So anything that just let me read a lot of books.
My favorite subject in school was chemistry. I loved it. I loved the fact that it made sense to me. I loved the fact that it was so orderly.
Oh, that's an easy one. It was math. I loved it, and I still love it. I'm kind of a nerd about that, but I still think it's fun.
Hands down, history. I just loved, I loved my teachers, and I just loved that it always told a story.
So probably science, but that's not the course that I used the most from my high school career. The course I used the most from my high school career is typing.
What's the best piece of advice a teacher gave you?
Your path is not a straight line. The best journeys take different curves and turns.
Definitely my science teacher, he made me realize that we're not learning just for the sake of learning, but that it's important that we take the knowledge that we learn and apply it to the world to make it better.
Dr. Jerkowitz was our senior year religion teacher, and his whole idea was think for yourself. Learn a lot about different things and analyze different points of view, and then learn how to think for yourself.
I guess that would be just never doubt yourself. Just go for it.
Learn to advocate for yourself.
You can do it. Sometimes you don't think you can. Sometimes you need other people really to see something in you that you don't see, and that was a big difference for me.
What advice would you give students who want to make a difference in their school or community?
Same thing. You can do it. You absolutely can do it. You can get connected. You can find things that are important to you, meet people. And if there's something that you see is wrong, or you want to get involved, just do it.
Show up. Participate. Get involved. It doesn't matter if it's something that you love or you don't love. It's just, take a chance. Try something.
Don't just learn, but take what you learn and go out into the world, and use what you've learned here to make it a better place.
If you want to make a difference, stay informed by listening and participating.
The best thing you could do is give back.
You can do a lot just by participating as much as you can. You can contribute. So just get involved. Don't hold back.
I think board members sometimes get a little nervous about when you are going to videotape us, and aren't always excited to see the results, but more because we're self-conscious about how we look. But thank you so much. And Sound, that was a very nice message to the community. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. So per board policy, we do live and recorded public comment before the meeting gets going. I don't see any public comment in the room, and I understand there's no recorded public comment. So I guess we'll move on to the report from board committees. Curriculum. Dr. Babson.
Okay. So the Board Curriculum Committee met last Tuesday, the 21st, and we held a, let's say, a blockbuster meeting. It's a big meeting of the year when we talk about the Achievement Report. We also mentioned the program of studies, and you can look at tonight's consent agenda item 12.03 regarding the latter. And our next meeting will be held on the 18th of February at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Finance Committee. Mrs. Solomon?
We met, the Finance Committee met on January 14th. There are several items on the consent agenda that went through committee. The first, well, the first action item was the financial reports, the approval of contracts, and the approval of disposal. The next subject discussed was payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot agreement, which will be extended for another year, also on the consent agenda. The tax collector compensation arrangement, that's also on consent. And we had an update on finance and budget. And it is my understanding that there is a delay in getting our... Drawing a blank on the term. Our audit completed, so we will be looking at that in February. And our next meeting will be February 11th at 5:00 p.m., where I think we will be receiving the audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. The Policy Committee.
Yes. The Policy Committee met on January 14th. The only items on the agenda were the second reads of four policies. We did not do any first reads, so each of those policies are now up for the board for adoption tonight. And we also had a brief presentation from the administration on the district's continuing efforts to manage the rise of artificial intelligence, and we are continuing with our approach of not having a standalone AI policy, but just addressing each of the areas in which AI is expected to have an impact. So this, you know, I think as a committee, we agreed that this principles-guided approach is very appropriate, and it was nice to hear an update on that front. And our next meeting is on February 11th.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. Facilities is our last report. The Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, the 21st. We were scheduled 7:30, but due to a long curriculum meeting, we met around 8:00. We had... No one's bitter about that. Two items on the consent agenda. One, the temporary HVAC system at Ithin, and then also the second phase of our high school roofing project. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th at 7:00 p.m. I do want to note in that meeting, we're going to have an important update on the Ithin project. And note for the board members that there are two key meetings coming up in terms of the development of that project, and they are, one is tomorrow night, January 29th. It's the Shade Tree Committee at 6:30 p.m. here in this building. And then also on February 3rd in this building, we're going to have the preliminary land development meeting, and also at 6:30. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just making a note on those. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And though board action is required, it's generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items, so with the consent of all the board, they are therefore grouped, and approval is given in one motion. May I ask if anyone on the board has any item they'd like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Okay.
Can we stop Mrs. Le Sage from retiring?
No, unfortunately, we do have to let her go when she asks to go. You threw me off. Sorry. So may I have a motion to approve items 9.01 through 15.02 of the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Solomon and a second from Mrs. Stern. All those in favor? I? I think I have a 9-0 vote. Okay. And then flipping through to 1502, sorry, to item 16, is the reports from the board liaisons and community announcements. The first item on the agenda is the Delaware County Community College. Mrs. Solomon?
Yes. Delaware County Community College has selected three new candidates to be on the trustee, the Board of Trustees for the community college. So the school board members are part of the liaison committee, and one of our tasks is to appoint the trustees, which actually act as like the school board for the community college. And so the three trustees' appointments that they've put forward are Alex Brown, Gail Hind Mayor, and Tiffany Bowen. And they're, you can contact me if you want information about their backgrounds and more information about those people.
Well, is it the three of them are up for one position, or it's their three, filling three positions?
Yeah, no, they're three separate.
They're filling three different trustee positions.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Dr. Babson?
Sure. We met for our business and committee meetings on the 8th and 15th, respectively, when they are normally scheduled, the first and second Wednesday of the month. And these past meetings, we covered some new personnel items. We talked about some capital projects, and there was some discussion also of some particular programs that are just very interesting and very, I don't know, I think I would say, kind of exciting and new going on at the DCIU. And one other thing I should mention is that there are a few new, well, there are a few changes to the board composition. There are a few board members who have recently resigned. So that's about it. Our next meetings are going to be on the 5th and 12th of February, respectively. Thanks.
Thank you. Those capital projects, are they going to be something we need to account for in our budget going forward, or?
No.
Okay. Awesome. Last, or next item on the agenda is the Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council. And usually I give this report, but as early as they meet, I had work that morning, and Ms. Lau was gracious enough to cover for me, so she's going to give the report.
Sure. So the Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council met on January 8th. It was the first meeting of the year, so we had quite a few brand-new liaisons participating. So we had a brief discussion about the role of a liaison and kind of the most effective use of our time. They did have their obligatory legislative update. Unfortunately, it was just a list of every single bill relating to education that has been introduced during the current legislative session of the Pennsylvania Assembly. I asked for a little bit more color as to which bills actually had legs, because I think most of us know, vast majority of bills that are introduced have no hope of making it out of committee, much less passing on, you know, or much less making it to a full vote on the floor for passage. Unfortunately, the people who were at the meeting did not have access to that information, so they promised to come back to us and hopefully help us, you know, kind of focus more on the bills that we might actually have to deal with in the future. The next meeting of the council is on February 12th.
Thank you. Last item on this portion of the agenda is the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Mr. Thornton?
No new updates to provide at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We also typically do community announcements at this portion of the agenda, if anybody has anything. And I know, Ms. Lau, you had mentioned to me you had a report you wanted to give.
Sure. Thank you. As many of you know, our country will celebrate its semi-quincentennial next year, marking 250 years since the Declaration of Independence. I am honored to have been appointed to the Delaware County America 250 Commission, which is our local, nonpartisan initiative to engage all Delaware County residents in the meaningful commemoration of America's 250th anniversary from now through 2026. We encourage all who live or work in Delaware County to join us in this important endeavor. Some of you might be old enough to remember the bicentennial and what a big deal that was. This is an occasion that each of us will be lucky enough to experience just once or twice in our lifetimes. So please visit our website at America250padelco.org, or just Google us to get involved. You can read about all the programs that we are coordinating or supporting. And if your organization has special plans for the semi-quin, please reach out to see if you can become one of our community program partners and receive funding and support for your efforts. We hope that all school districts, including Radnor, will use the 2025 to 2026 school year to ignite their students' imaginations and inspire service by telling the diverse stories about America's founding and history. Above all, we hope that each of you will find your own way to celebrate your freedom and express your hopes and dreams for the next 50 years of the great American experiment. Indeed, let us do nothing less than to answer the call of Lincoln. Let us ensure that government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. You've got a lot going on. Any other community announcements? Okay. Last item here is the board announcements. The board, I think we've given the updates on when the committee meetings will be in February. The one that we didn't give was the GRCC will be on February 11th at 7:00 p.m. in the first-floor conference room, ground-floor conference room of our administrative building on the district property. And our school, next full school board meeting will be Tuesday, February 25th, back here in the Radnorshire Room of the Township Administrative Building at 7:00, as is our standard. I do not see any public comment in the room, which leaves us with a motion for adjournment. Does someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Ms. Solomon and...
Second.
And a second from Ms. Duffy. All in favor? I'm going to call that 9-0.